Good evening, it is Monday, November the 18th, 6:00 PM. Time to call the Garden City Council meeting to order. And in a moment, I'm gonna call Pastor Eric Mason up from Jesus First Community Church, but I would just like to thank Pastor for what he's done for our community since his church has come to Garden City. He wasn't here very long and he asked for a meeting with me and Ron and a bunch of my staff and he offered up that he would do anything in the community. He's held a couple of meetings over there. He's always willing to go above and beyond, so I thank you for what you've done for Garden City. So I'm gonna ask everyone to stand, ask Pastor Mason to come up.
Thank you, Brother Mayor. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our beloved community, the community of Garden City. Thank you for all who have gathered this evening for this city council meeting. And we thank you for this past election and how you allowed Mayor Bethune to serve this community another term along with all present and new council members. We pray for your wisdom, your knowledge, your guidance, your understanding, your patience and compassion upon each of them as they serve and carry out their duties, responsibilities, and commitments to the citizens of this community. Father, through all generations, you have been our dwelling place, and for that, we exalt your holy name. The earth is yours and the fullness thereof, the world and they that dwell therein. It all belongs to you. You laid the earth's foundation on the seas and built it on the ocean's depth. Royal power belongs to you. You rule all nations. Gracious Father, we decree that all authority comes from you, and those in position of authority have been placed there by you to always, to best, to the best of their abilities, carry what's in the best interests of the people of this community. Therefore, we declare that your divine will be done with this council. Your word states, "What doeth the Lord require of thee? But to do justly, and to love mercy, and to walk humbly before God." We command peace, love, joy upon all who serve as leaders of this beloved community, the community of Garden City, in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I'll ask the clerk, call Roll.
Mayor Bethune.
Here.
Mayor Protim Kicklider.
Here.
Councilmember McCamell.
Here.
Councilmember Cody.
Here.
Councilmember Daniel.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
And Councilmember Tice.
Councilmember Campbell is on vacation and is not here with us tonight. This time, we're gonna recognize one of our own, and I'm gonna step down to the podium and ask Councilmember Cody to step down there with me, please.
Let me help you. Do you need me to help you?
Why did she have to do that?
I have a resolution that I'd like to read. Whereas Rosetta Bryant Cody has served with distinction as councilmember for District Four of Garden City for eight years, from January 3, 2012, to the present, and whereas Rosetta Bryant Cody has always been known to the community for her volunteer work, having served on the Garden City Pride Committee, the Garden City Beautification Committee, and the Garden City Housing Team. And whereas, as an active participant in many task forces and committees, Rosetta has demonstrated her keen devotion to improving the quality of life for others, her concern for the homeless, senior citizens, and youth of our community, her deep commitment to education, and her abiding faith and love for her community. And whereas, Rosetta Bryant Cody has well-served the best interests of the residents of District by insisting upon a firm understanding of the issues before making decisions, wanting to tie each issue back to the community level by determining how it is going to benefit the economic vitality of Garden City. And whereas, Rosetta Cody's agenda while on City Council focused on the revitalization of the Cooper Center and its continued use of after-school programs and summertime recreation activities for children, as well as improving the quality of roads and utilities within her district. And whereas, Garden City has greatly benefited from Rosetta's sincere and conscientious efforts to lead it in the right direction. Now therefore, being resolved by the mayor and council of Garden City in regular session assembled, that Rosetta Bryant Cody be commended for her admirable public service, her true spirit of volunteerism, and her tireless efforts and unfailing commitment to the betterment of the community. She will be deeply missed by those who have had the honor to work with her, as well as the citizens of Garden City, in particular, the residents of District Four whom she has worked so hard to protect. Thank you for your service, Rosetta. (applause) Give it to you, we're gonna have a photo op, and when we get back up, I'll give council members the opportunity to make any statements. And we need a picture in front here, Ben, are we gonna get it right here? Can we get it right?
That's the seal.
done, but she has diligently served her district and her community. She will be sorely missed, and you might be thinking about this when we, on a Monday when we have a meeting, but you might say, "I got other things to do." So, Rosetta, thank you for everything you've done for Garden City, and you'll be missed. This time, any council members have anything to add?
I'd like to say something. Rosetta, it's been a pleasure working with you all these years. I don't know how I'm gonna work without you sitting by me. It's, you've done so much for your district. Your successor has big shoes to fill. You've done good, and I love you and I'm very, very proud of you. Bob would be very proud of you.
Thank you.
And Rosetta, I've served on several other committees with you, and I've learned a lot over these last six years with you, and I've become to love you dearly, and I still hope to support you and continue whatever you need and still help you at the center, whatever, with your children that you do. You've been awesome, and I wish you all the best, and as Bessie said, Bob would be very proud of you.
I'll still be here in Garden City anytime you need me. I was also the president of the Cooper Center.
That's right.
For two terms.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Me, of course. Hey, baby cakes. We call each other baby cakes. You are a very special person, very dedicated. Your district could not have asked for a better representative. I've grown to love you dearly, and what a fabulous cook. So you can visit us anytime you would like. We love you, we will miss you. You've left some big shoes to fill. We love you.
Thank you. Love you too.
I have too big of a follow-up. But I'll miss you and I love you, so they said it all.
I'll miss you too, dear.
Thank you so much. This time, we're gonna open up our meeting for anyone who would like to come forward and speak for three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak for three minutes? Seeing no movement, we'll get into our regular agenda. Entertaining a motion for consideration of City Council minutes dated 11/4/19 and workshop synopsis dated 11/11/19.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries, we're going into our staff reports. First up is planning and zoning, and Scott Robidere is gonna give that for us.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's a pleasure to be here on behalf of Ron Alexander to present his report. He's currently out, but hopes to be back soon. I'd like to report on the inspections portion of the report at this time. During the month of October, the Building Department issued 43 permits, 120 inspections, 100 planned reviews, conducted 90 meetings with the developments, approximately 16 hours of in-house and field training. The Fire Marshal's Department had 60 onsite inspections, 50 planned reviews, and eight hours of training. Flood plan and management, approximately 40 related site inspections and 30 planned reviews. So it was a busy month for planning and zoning. To highlight some of the special projects and events, Garden City Town Center site plan is 60% complete. So I can, I assume you can tell by the back, when it's not too dark, there's a lot of activity going on back there. I know we all look forward to seeing the project done as soon as possible. There are vertical plan reviews for the new Dollar General, and that continues to move forward. So the plans are in, they're being reviewed at this time. The Logistics Center on Sunny Purdue, Number Two Sunny Purdue, is currently being reviewed. We have the plans and the site plan. The Kingston Hotel on Minus Avenue is continuing to move forward. We look forward to that. The Sleep Inn Hotel on Second Street in Delitri, the plans are in. There are some obstacles there that need to be overcome on behalf of the developers, so we're continuing to work with them as well. And Tracco Construction is expanding their current location on Export Boulevard. They'll be adding on to their warehouse. Empire Distributors, which we discussed many months back, will be coming to Chatham Parkway. These are some of the highlighted developments on this list. Prior to Ron Alexander's absence, he submitted a very comprehensive and detailed report to you. I would refer you to that report. If you have any specific questions, though, I'd be happy to attempt to answer them at this time.
Any questions for Scott? Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Works. Cliff Davis is filling in for Benny Gooch tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
This is the Public Works and Water Report for the month of October. Public Works personnel completed 29 residential requests, making 136 work orders for the month of October. They included 6,552 feet of ditch maintenance, canal maintenance, 76 miles, underground stormwater utility point repairs, multiple storm drains and inverters cleaned, no storm drains vacuumed, streets, $15,527 for third-party street asphalt repairs. Those were in the areas of Chatham Villa, Smith, Bowman, Pine Land Tower, and Hawkinsville. About 1,335 miles of shoulder maintenance. All of our dirt and gravel roads were graded, and minor pothole and asphalt repair were done by staff. 234 miles of street sweeping, three knockdowns replaced, and new signs, City Hall, Main, Tyson, Bishop, Big Six, and Priscilla Thomas slash Wheat Hill. There was one streetlight outage. All have been repaired. 12.54 tons collected, total mixed dry trash. 353.7 tons collected year-to-date, taken to Savannah Regional. No truckloads this month, and 10 truckloads of dry trash have been taken to Savannah inert year-to-date. On the tree side of things, 4,700 was spent for tree removal, tree trimming, and debris removal, all third-party, Sharon Park, Junction Avenue, Smith, and Daniel, and the firehouse. On the fleet maintenance side during the month of October, the city staff repaired 41 vehicles or apparatus and equipment for a current annual total of 579 of our top service requests. Ditch maintenance was number one. Dry trash was number two, and then signage, tree removal, and debris removal were all the same. Our top work orders, grass cutting, ditch maintenance coming in number two, and then trash, debris removal, street sweeping, and signage were all pretty close as well. On the water operations side, there was 98 service, 98 service orders were received and 30 work orders, for a total of 128 for the month of October. Water, 23 work orders, produced 31.125 million gallons of drinking water per day. On the hydrant side, we had one hydrant repair. Water line services, we had nine lateral line repairs, installs, replacements, and maintenance. Three main line repairs, installs, replacements, and maintenance, excuse me. 170 located services, and this continues marking for our major projects of the new gas main and services, and other projects on Main, fiber optic installation, and the mega rail bridge project. We had 43 water cut-ons, 79 reconnects, delinquent water bills, and 59 cutoffs. On the meter services, we had one meter and MXU investigation, nine maintenance services, eight meter and MXU replacements, 105 city-initiated rereads. On the sewer side, we have seven work orders, including one sewer clean-out repair, four replacements. On the gravity main services, we had one repair. Sewer lateral services, we had one blockage cleared, and nothing on the manhole side. For the treatment plant and water system, Clear Waters submitted the MOR for water, DMR for wastewater, and all paperwork pertaining to them for the month of October 2019. The treatment plant treated and discharged a total daily average of 1.1 million gallons daily for the month of October. The water system withdrew a total of 31.125 million gallons from well facilities and used 0.120 million gallons from Savannah IND purchase system, which is the Town Center water system. During the month of October, 15,956 pounds of dry solids were removed from the treatment plant. The in-house laboratory continued to analyze most all NPDES permit and process control tests, except the annual tests that are contracted with the EPD. And that concludes the report from Public Works.
Y'all been busy.
Yes, sir.
Any questions for Cliff? Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you.
Next up is Chief Police, Chief Ballard.
It's hot in here tonight. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Some of the highlights from our services in October. We had approximately 2,549 calls for service and/or self-initiated activity. We did have some crimes, but nothing specific as far as trends. It appears to be, in many of those cases, a spot-on crime, crime of opportunity. Moving on to traffic issues, we had a total of 1,183 traffic violations that we recorded involving situations such as 62 accidents for the month. We, again, have a speeding problem, 563 speeding tickets issued, 425 written warnings. Warnings are usually in cases such as tag lights, brake lights, things of that sort that could happen to any one of us, so that's generally, some people ask why is such a high number? We wrote 60 seatbelt violations and we arrested 25 DUIs, so we've increased our traffic enforcement, which we also conducted a road check, so that's usually at nighttime, so reason for that number. Moving on to code enforcement, some of the highlights are 69 cases came into compliance. There were 211 re-inspections. We issued 89 violations, notices of violations. We have currently three court cases pending involving code issues, and we tagged some vehicles to be towed, and they also conducted 13 stormwater inspections. As far as the Garden City Municipal Court, 1,156 cases handled in court for the month, and 114 of those issued probation in reference to training for the department. We had over 170 hours of training. Some of the highlights involved crisis intervention training, which is very important with mental illness. We all know we have that problem in the county. And we also had to, we, excuse me, also sent a detective some specialized training, so we were able to do that, as we have a new person assigned to CID. Some items of interest, we're excited that recruit Wesley Sorkin started the police academy on October 2nd. He's due to graduate in December, we're looking forward to that. I was able to attend a bridge builder exercise and breakfast in Savannah. We also implemented our new management software system, so we're looking forward to that, better tracking opportunities that we haven't had with our old system. We also were able to reach out to our community. We did several cops at bus stops. We did one at Chatham City. We did one at Savannah Mobile Home Park, and we did one at the Arbor's Apartments. And we also were able to attend several appreciation luncheons, one of those being Jesus First Christ Community Church, so thank you. And we also selected a new canine officer. We had federal funds to approve a new canine purchase, so we've picked a new canine officer. So any day now, when they get back from Germany, we're gonna travel to Florida, pick out our new dog, and everybody likes the dogs. So we'll have our second canine asset hopefully soon, and then they'll go off and train in January, so we're looking forward to that. And then one bit of news I'd like to mention, it's not in the report. I just got back from the Kalia, which is the Commission on Law Enforcement. They're the ones that handle the national accreditation. Your agency is state-certified, nationally-accredited, but it's a continuous process, it doesn't just happen. A lot of hard work goes into that. So I am honored and proud to be able to let you know that your agency has been officially re-accredited as of Saturday night, and that basically says we're the best of the best, and we adhere to certain policies and procedures, and with your investment and support, I have no question in saying that you have one of the top-notch police departments. There's only 28 in the entire state that are nationally accredited.
Thank you.
Thank you. And when we get our certificate, we'll do something right after the first of the year, and we plan on doing a press release very shortly, very soon. So thank you, any questions, concerns?
Congratulations. That's a wonderful New Year's. Thank you.
Congratulations. Can you remind the residents and the individuals that travel through Garden City in the mornings, the proper procedure for school buses, when they stop, and what your officers found the other morning when y'all did a spot check, please?
Yes, well, first of all, we appreciate community input. We're not everywhere. So we actually got a video of several vehicles running past a bus in front of Chatham City on Highway 21. Early morning hours, it's very dark, the bus is lit up like a Christmas tree, and not one car stopped. So based on that, we had some officers out there a couple of days later, and everybody got a ticket. And then I actually got a call about why were y'all out there, 'cause I got a ticket. We'll deal with that, but the key component to that is, when school buses are operating and functioning, the lights have stopped, unless there's a concrete median or a separation in the road, all lanes of traffic are required to stop by law. And that is a, that's an ongoing problem, it's just not here, it's everywhere, but I appreciate that, Mayor, to put the word out, because we'd rather not have that happen and not write a ticket, but unfortunately, without enforcement, there is no compliance sometimes, so we'll do our due diligence. But again, unless there's a separation barrier between you and the bus, all lanes of traffic are required to stop.
And I'm glad to see them right there at 21 at the trailer park, right down from the shopping center, because that's been happening at 5:30 in the morning as well.
This was early in the morning.
Yep, and they're running, you know, they're going toward Rincon, and the bus has stopped right there, and they're, they're going around it and...
But, you know, the video just doesn't do it justice. I mean, you could clearly see all the lights, and everybody just drives past the bus, so...
I'm glad to see the presence of the officer at 5:30, 'cause that bus really had...
Well, again, we encourage the public to let us know where the issues are, and, you know, we'll, we'll move around as we need to, so thank you.
Yep, good job.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up is our Fire Chief, Corbin Maderas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
Here's the Fire Department report for October. We ran a total of 226 calls for the month of October. Brings our year-to-date of 2,172. Our number-one call is gonna be the medical first responder call. We had six fire calls and 25 vehicle accidents. In the month of October, we had 645 hours of training as a department, which is averaged about 35 hours per firefighter. I attended the arson Level Two course at Gipstick. Firefighter Mills attended Gipstick as an instructor for interior search and rescue. Firefighter Hager attended Fire Department Management. Chief Lewis, Sergeant Gregory, and Firefighter Mills instructed National Fire Academy in a Gipstick class here at Station One. Captain Roberts, Sergeant Sullivan, Firefighter Mills also attended aerial operator at Poole Fire. Chief Lewis attended CAT RMS meeting. He also did the Hurricane Dorian after-action meeting, the Chatham EMS advisory meeting. He also tested, he also tested apparatus, or the aerial operator at Poole as a state proctor. And then Chief Lewis and Scott Kimball attended the TIM's Training, which is that resolution we did for traffic incident management, try to clear road rates as fast as possible, safely, at the Poole Police Department. For fire safety education, this last month, we did a truck demo and safety education at Savannah Christian. Myself and Sergeant Gregory spoke to students about the importance of math and science, fire, and paramedicine. Then the shift conducted truck demos and safety educations at Nana School of Knowledge, Gold Elementary, and Living Hope Community Church. I also attended, and so the shift attended the Jesus First Community Church. During the month, we continued our blood pressure checks at the Senior Center, and looking ahead, we're gonna continue partnering with the Stop the Bleed program, and that's the Fire Department report for October.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, good job. Ron, do you have any updates?
Uh, no, sir.
Thank you. This time, we have a number of items for consideration. First one is ordinance Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages. I'll ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Garden City of Georgia as amended by amending Chapter Six, Article Two, Division Three, to permit and regulate Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages by the drink per consumption on the premises of certain qualifying restaurants and hotel motels from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM.
Entertaining a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Ron, you give us an overview of this, please?
Yeah, back on November 5th, we had a referendum in the community to pass Sunday sales of alcohol, but specific to early morning sales, the brunch bill is what it's commonly known as, to move up sales from 12:30 to 11:00, as it says, under certain qualifying restrictions. And that having been passed, now we have to adopt an ordinance to effectuate the activity in our community.
Thank you. We have a motion seconded, voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes on the first reading. Entertaining a motion to suspend the rules of council?
Make a motion to suspend the rules of council, I have the second reading.
Second.
We have a motion seconded, voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This time, I'd ask the clerk to read it by heading only.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of Garden City of Georgia as amended by amending Chapter Six, Articles Two, Division Three, to permit and regulate Sunday sales of alcoholic beverages by the drink per consumption on the premises of certain qualifying restaurants and hotel motels from 11:00 AM to 12:30 PM.
Entertaining a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes on the second reading. We have our 2020 schedule of fees. I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
Consideration by the Mayor and City Council to approve the updated schedule of fees for fiscal year 2020.
Entertaining a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And Ron, this is just something we do every year, setting our fee...
Yeah, we've gotta set our fee schedule to coincide with the budget adoption, because it's this fee schedule that generates a portion of the revenue, so having this approved and adopted by the City Council in conjunction with the next item, or the following item later on, the budget, is necessary.
Thank you. We have a motion seconded, voting on the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed, motion carries. We have a resolution for Evergreen Solutions Compensation Plan update, I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize the implementation of updates recommended by Evergreen Solutions to the city's compensation plan for fiscal year 2020.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And Ron, if you'd give us an overview of that...
Yeah, the city has a policy that every three years, we benchmark our compensation plan and evaluate its competitiveness against our surrounding local governments, to ensure that the compensation plan that we're implementing keeps us competitive in the marketplace. This was the latest three-year exercise that we've done, and adoption of this resolution tonight, or approval of it, will enable us to implement the compensation plan recommendations from the consultant in 2020 as part of the budget.
We have a motion, second, voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution FY 2020 Budget Adoption, I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2020 operating capital budgets to provide appropriation of funds for operating capital expenditures to appropriate funding for specific operating and capital funds of the Garden City government.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And this is just our budget for next year, which I think went very smoothly, and staff did a wonderful job.
Well, yeah, I appreciate all the work done by the Finance Director, Rhonda Farrell-Bowles, to put the budget together the way she did, and then for y'all's input back at the budget retreats earlier this year, obviously, it's one of the, it is the most important probably exercise that we undertake as a community each year, and the effort put forth has resulted in another process that I think everyone's pretty pleased with.
Thank you, anyone have any comments on that? Thank you, we have a motion, second, voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Resolution SAPS Record Service Contract Modifications, I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize an amendment to the city services contract with SAPS Record Service, Inc., for the purpose of increasing the towing and storage fees set forth in the city's year-to-year service contract with SAPS Record Service.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And Ron, if you'd give us an overview of that, please?
Yeah, this is a annual contract that renews each fiscal year, and SAPS, this year, for the first time in, I think, three years, has requested a CPI, or Consumer Price Index, increase to reflect their increased cost to do this particular service, and after working with them, we've come up with this plan in order to implement a new rate schedule for their services in 2020.
Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution Redspeed Service Agreement Modification, I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to the city's professional services agreement with Redspeed, Georgia.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And Ron, if you'd give us an overview, this is going to help us out with speeders in our school zones.
Yes, a couple, a couple months ago, I should say, we adopted the initial resolution for this agreement, and through some negotiations with Redspeed Services, the provider and the school board, we're modifying the allocation of the revenues a little bit, hence this resolution coming before you tonight, but what it will do, now that we're moving forward, is allow Redspeed to set up camera devices within the Highway twenty-one and Highway seventeen school zones, to better monitor speed of traffic, and theoretically to create a safer corridor in these areas for our parents and bus drivers and students that are trying to make their way to school.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution Trade Center Contract Second Amendment, I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Contract Extending the Expiration of the Trade Center Intergovernmental Contract to December thirty-first, 2052.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And Ron, if you'd give us an overview of that, please?
Yes, about three years ago, the Trade Center approached us and asked us to modify our tax agreement that we have with them in terms of the amount of hotel motel tax that's sent over to support operations, expansion of the Trade Center. Well, as you have all followed in the news, the state of Georgia has now gotten actively involved in the mega-expansion, two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar expansion of the Trade Center, and in connection with the state's substantial commitment, we've been asked to extend and commit further our hotel motel tax dollars to the operation and facility construction expansion of the Trade Center, and that's, we'll be considering tonight as this resolution.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution Convention Visitors Bureau Agreement, ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize the city to enter into an agreement with the Garden City Area Convention and Visitors Bureau Authority, and to authorize the city manager to execute said agreement.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
And Ron, if you'd give us an overview, please?
Yeah, the Convention and Visitors Bureau of Garden City is another entity that receives hotel motel tax money to perform their mission, and this agreement stands up and more autonomously operates, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, in terms of what their mission is, to bring visitors and to promote tourism throughout Garden City, and through the efforts of our current CVB Board, Jackie Jackson and her role, we've come up with a agreement and an operational plan that we want to enact in 2020, so this resolution allows us to move that plan forward here in the next couple of weeks into next year.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next is a resolution FY 2020 LMI-G Program, I'd ask the clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to apply to the Georgia Department of Transportation for a 2020 Local Maintenance Improvement Grant to assist with the funding for the resurfacing of Rommel Avenue, and to further authorize the city manager to accept and execute a work order with Brendan Jones Engineering Associates for the design work, bid solicitation, and construction administration associated with the road resurfacing project.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And Ron, if you could tell us a little bit about that, please?
Yes, each year, the Georgia Department of Transportation, through their LMI-G Program, which is for street improvements, provides us about a hundred thousand dollars in grant money. We have to match that grant, as we identify typically residential streets throughout the city for activity in a given year. We've been rotating this program around the city over the last several years, and this year, the north part of the city is up, after not having any improvements, I think, the last two years. We identified Rommel Avenue because of its condition, first and foremost, but also because traffic is relatively light on it at this time, because the Main Street Bridge is closed at Pipe Makers Canal, so we're going to take advantage of the low traffic and need to get this project done, we hope, in the first part of 2020 next year.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Resolution Garden City-Savannah Prosperity Area Water Sewer Agreement, ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to authorize the city manager to execute on behalf of the city an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Savannah for water supply service on a wholesale basis provided by the city of Savannah to Garden City for the Prosperity Drive service area.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
And Ron, you give us an overview, please?
Yes, currently at this location, town center, city of Savannah is our water provider with a transmission line that exists on the west side of Dean Forest Road, there's other connection points along that transmission line, including at Prosperity Drive and Dean Forest Road north of here, and the demand has built up as a result of existing development, but also new development that's going to be coming in in the Prosperity Drive area, such that we have asked the city of Savannah to execute another intergovernmental agreement with us, such that they can provide us a water service connection there at that intersection, and we can open up a new service area to provide public water services to those particular properties and businesses in the area, and this agreement essentially formalizes that arrangement between us and the city of Savannah to go forward with that plan.
Thank you. Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Y'all really loaded us up for not having that meeting in December, we're almost through, folks. Next one is Resolution Public Works Department Vehicles, ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to set the proposal of J.C. Lewis Ford to sell the city's Public Works Department a 2020 F-150 Super Crew Truck, and a 2020 F-350 regular cab truck, and to further authorize the city manager to execute the purchase contracts for the vehicles.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And Ron, this is some vehicles that have been budgeted, and we're just going to buy them, because they really need them.
And, yeah, we're at the end of the fiscal year here, the quote from J.C. Lewis came in below the budget amount, and as we've committed to the city council, when we make purchases of this type, we'll bring them before you for resolution, adoption, and action, and then once we get your approval, we'll go ahead, secure the vehicles, and put them to work.
Thank you. Did I call for a motion on that, by the way? I might have got ahead of myself, Rhonda, I did. All right, we have a motion, second, voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Resolution City Council Meeting Schedule Amendment, ask clerk to read that by heading only.
A resolution to amend the regular meeting schedule of the Garden City City Council during the period of December second, 2019, through January twenty-first, 2020.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
And this is something, really, we don't have a lot of business going on in December, and we just decided to waive that one.
Yeah, we've done this each of the ten years I've been here, we've always modified the schedule at the end of the year, as we kind of wrap the business of the city up, and this particular resolution formalizes that meeting plan going forward.
Voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Write-off of 2012 and 2013 utility accounts receivable deemed uncollectible, I'd ask clerk to read that by heading only.
Consideration by the mayor and city council to authorize the write-off of the 2012 through 2013 utility accounts totaling fifty-seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and seventy-seven cents that the city's collection company has identified as older than six years, and therefore deemed uncollectible.
Entertained a motion?
Make a motion for approval. Second.
Ron, if you'd give us overview of that, please?
Yeah, I think about three years ago, the auditor instructed us that carrying this bad debt forward with the absence of collection, you know, prospects going forward, was not a good practice, and cited other communities and sound practices in accounting that, when you get to this point where you cannot collect it, that it should just be written off as bad debt, as happens, you know, in a lot of other businesses, credit cards, things of that nature. And the fifty-seven thousand from 2012, 2013, as I said earlier, we do about five million dollars a year in revenue in the utilities department, so this represents a very small percentage, and the reasons could be people moved out of state, we can't track them down, they're deceased, whatever it may be, this residual money has just been deemed uncollectible, and therefore, we want to write it off as bad debt, as advised by the auditor.
Thank you, voting on the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And this time, I'd like to call Pastor Mason back up, because I indicated what a good partner he is for Garden City, and I'd like for him to announce a special event that your church is going to be hosting later this month.
Yes, sir, thank you. On the twenty-seventh of, I believe it is Wednesday, you caught me off guard, I couldn't remember what day it was, the twenty-seventh, I believe it is, at four o'clock, from four to seven, it's going to be a community Thanksgiving meal for all those that are, you know, in the community that perhaps could not afford to purchase a meal, or do not have a family to sit down and eat with, we've afforded ourselves to be able to partner with some grocery stores, and some other people in the community that have provided resources, Second Harvard Food Bank, and they have provided the resources that we need to put together a pretty nice Thanksgiving meal that won't cost us anything but to come down and sit at the church, and the meal will be prepared, my staff, along with some others, will be preparing the meals, and those that could want to come, they're more than welcome to come by from the hours of four PM to seven. Our goal is mainly to kind of, you know, we really want to kind of cater to those that are homeless, and maybe living under the bridge, or whatever have you, because those individuals don't have a family, so we kind of wanted to be our focus, but at the same time, we don't want the room to be filled with just single-in-out individuals such, we want to let them know that we all are part of, you know, sharing in this whole Thanksgiving season, so on that particular day, we'll be doing that as a community, and we'll be hosting it at our church at twenty-two oh-two U.S. Highway eighty west in Garden City. Also, on the eighteenth of December, we're going to have a community brunch, again, we did this in a couple of weeks ago, back in October, and it was a wonderful fellowship, we had all of the mayor and the staff, and quite a few of you all were there, and then we had the police officers, and the triage, and all those that are working in the community, and I think it's important for us to give back to those individuals that work so hard in our communities, to keep us safe, and to make sure that our families are well, so it's not often that we get a chance to serve them, the sanitation department, we just kind of opened up that day, so that we can be, you know, a blessing to those that are working in the community, so that would be on the eighteenth, from eleven-thirty to one o'clock at the church as well, and again, it's not costing you anything but your time to come by and just pick up a meal on that particular day. Now, I don't know if the mayor decided to do this or not, but we will need a Santa Claus somewhere, so I told him that we could possibly get him to dress up somewhere, we would be more than happy, but that's not, you know, a promise, but at least you know that we want you all to come and be a part of that on that particular day as well.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. And I will have to say that you have some members at your church that are excellent cooks.
Yes, sir.
The food was very good.
Yes, sir, thank you so very much.
Thank you. This will be our last official meeting for the year, no more workshops, no more council meetings, our next meeting will be on January the sixth, when we have our swearing-in services for our three newly elected members, two newly elected and one re-elected, but I would just like to take this opportunity to thank Ron and staff, we have a number of our department heads in here, y'all make our job extremely easy, y'all go about your job very well with very little supervision from us. I have people all the time say, well, it's hard being mayor, I said, you've got a good city manager, and a good council, and good department heads, it's very easy, so I thank you for everything that you and your staff have done, y'all made this year a great year for Garden City. We had... We have accomplished a lot in this past year, and next year, we have a lot of other things on our agenda, and there's going to be great things coming down the road for Garden City, so I thank every, thank you and staff for everything that y'all have done, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, is there any other business that needs to come forward? Rosetta, thank you for eight years.
And I thank you, I thank everybody, I love you like a family. We love you too.
Thank you so much, this time, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned, thank y'all for coming.